And welcome to the Isleta Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend as provided in Isleta's ISD policy BED. We invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting, according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on matters and citizens' input. According to tonight's agenda, we will hold citizens' input after the superintendent provides a COVID-19 update. I ask the audience to hold their comments until it is their time to speak during the citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students, and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:01 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, so Tero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Katherine, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Katherine Lucetta will be joining us. She's running a little bit late. Trustee Woodruff, would you please introduce the JROTC for this evening?
It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then the posting of the colors. The colors tonight are presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Bel Air High School. The colored guard commander is Cadet Giselle Castro. The other color guard members are Alani Rukobo, Jacenia Vasquez, Jacqueline Tapia Reyes. The pledge leader is Valerie Quintana, and she is a seventh grade student from the Young Women's Leadership Academy. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me in a
Thank you.
Forward, right, left, 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 right, right, left, left, color guard, oh, left, right. Reset, arms. Order, arms. Outward, face. Color guard, reform, left, 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 right, 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 left, right, left, left, center, face, right, face, forward, right, left, 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 right, 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 left, left.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the color guard from Bel Air High School. Before we proceed, Ms. Connie Woodruff has asked to say a few words on behalf of one of our constituents or from our community who recently passed away. Ms. Woodruff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ochoa. So, on August 17th, we had a tragedy in the Bel Air community. We lost a great man who had served the community so well for so many years as the president of the Yucca Council Neighborhood Association. His name was Mr. Ralph Cloud. You know, when I started trying to do this, I wanted to write stuff down, and my mind just kept taking off in all sorts of directions when it came to Mr. Cloud, because I've had quite a few experiences with him. You know, he was such a great supporter of the community. He worked so very hard to make sure that we had the things we needed in the Yucca area. And it's just hard to put into words how much his loss will mean to us. As I started thinking even further, though, I remembered there was one group of people, even though he loved all groups of people and he supported taking care of the Bel Air community for all of us there, there's one group of people that I think had his heart the most. And of course, that's the one that I serve also. That's our kids. I can tell you that the last, one of the last times that I talked to him, he basically said, "Don't worry, Connie. We're supporting this because it's for the kids. You just have to have so much respect for a man like that." And so, with sadness and with wondering how we're going to fill those big shoes, I just want to pay my respects to Mr. Ralph Cloud and also to tell his family how much we're going to miss him and how much that he meant to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. I knew Ralph back in the days when we first started. My first career is working in the railroad for Southern Pacific. We worked side by side. He was a hard worker, but he was stubborn. And that stubbornness has, I think, helped him in becoming the individual he became later on, a big part of our community. I just want to, on behalf of the board, offer a condolences to his family and say that we lost a good man. And may he rest in peace. Thank you. Okay, proceeding. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any recognitions this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, we have some very, very special recognitions this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Martinez, our chief communications officer, to make the introductions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have one recognition for you this evening. For safety and health reasons, we are asking the board and the superintendent to please stay in your place on the dais throughout the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognition is complete. Thank you. Tonight's recognition is in honor of the Bel Air High School gymnastics team, which had a phenomenal 2021 season last spring despite a year of setbacks and challenges. The women's team won first place at the district meet last spring, second place at regionals, and sixth place at the state meet with a score that set a new record for the school and for the district. Graduating senior Amanda Martinez also won first place in five areas at the district meet and third overall at the state meet. This qualified her for nationals in Florida, where she won third place in balance beam and sixth all around. In addition, the team's exceptional performance also resulted in awards for its coaches from the Texas High School Gymnastics Coaches Association. Coach Edgar Castro was named the West Texas Regional Men's Coach of the Year 2021, while Kristen Schumacher was named the Texas State Gymnastics Women's Coach of the Year 2021. Both were nominated and selected by fellow coaches, and the designations are a reflection of the consistency, talent, and hard work they have contributed to the advancement of gymnastics. Congratulations to the Highlanders on an amazing 2021 gymnastics season. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome members of the Bel Air High School Women's Gymnastics Team, beginning with Zetsaid Rivero. Senior Elena Torres. Junior Andrea Flores. And sophomore Alexa Alcaraz. Amanda Martinez could not be with us tonight because she currently attends Arizona State University, but accepting her recognition tonight is her mother, Ms. Alma Martinez. Let's hear it for the accomplishments of Amanda Martinez. The team is accompanied by coaches Edgar Castro and Kristen Schumacher. And Bel Air High School principal Jake Valtiera. Let's hear it one more time for the Bel Air Highlanders. This concludes our recognition this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, we have our COVID-19 update. I'm going to ask Ms. Leeper to lead in that presentation. And also with us this evening is Dr. Okaranza, who has graciously agreed to attend this meeting and answer any questions that any of you may have of Dr. Okaranza. So, welcome, Dr. Okaranza. Thank you for your flexibility and your willingness to be here tonight.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. I'm only going to take a moment because obviously Dr. Okaranza has vital, important information to share with you. So, as you know, we generally talk about our COVID-19 indicators, and then I'll also give you an update on vaccination status for the region or for Texas compared to El Paso. And then we'll talk about our rapid testing results since we started testing on August the 16th. So, you'll recognize these indicators. These are those that were approved by Region 19 and Commissioner Morath last year. We have operated with these indicators and haven't changed the underlying data or the calculations since they were originally approved. You can see that the average number of new daily cases in the community for last week, and mind you, this report is dated August 23rd, and it covers the period of August 9th to August 22nd. We had 128 average cases per day last week. That is below 130, and we've had mixes of positives and negatives in the last seven days. The average percent of positive tests compared to all tests administered for the prior week is 2.86%. This is well below 7.5%, which we saw frequently last year, and it again has mixes of increases and decreases in the last seven days. The change in the seven-day rolling average is where you see our red status. It's 1.7, which is obviously above the 1/10th for the last seven days. Again, it had mixes of increases and decreases for the last seven days. And then finally, Trauma Service Area I has a hospitalization indicator of 5.97%. Last year, you may remember, there were times when we were 45% and 55% of our hospital utilization was as a result of COVID-19. This week, we're seeing this indicator at about 6.2, 6.23%, so still well below the levels that we saw last year. And obviously, that puts us in code yellow, where we've been for at least the last 14 days and actually quite a bit longer than that. It is where we were when we came back to school last year, so we are operating in the levels that Region 19 and Commissioner Morath approved last year. I'm actually very proud of this because you were a contributor. Our nurses helped administer over 6,000 vaccines to our community. So, when you look at us in the blue versus the state of Texas in the green, you can see that for those age 12 and over, at least 84, almost 85% have received at least one dose compared to the state's almost 67%. We have 72% of age 12 and over are fully vaccinated compared to statewide 55.4%. And for those age 65 and over with at least one dose, we're 96, yes, 96.3% compared to the state's 85, while those that are fully vaccinated, 88% of those age 65 and over are fully vaccinated compared to the state's 76.3%. So, our nurses deserve a huge thank you, as well as many of our staff members, the city, the county, and the organizations that helped get us to that vaccination level. So, as you know, those age 12 and under are not eligible for the vaccine. So, starting August 16th, we began testing at all the elementary campuses. So, if we have parental consent, we test the children. There are some middle schools and international schools that have sixth graders or 12 and under, and we test there as well. In the first two weeks, we've tested 23,333 students with an average positivity rate, I'm sorry, all people, 23,333, with an average positivity rate of 3/10 of a percent. That's remarkable. And when you look at our student testing of 23,090, it's the 3/10 of a percent. The thing that drives our indicator up at all is the employee testing, 234 with a positivity of 1.3%. This is remarkable. And I can tell you that after reviewing the data, we have about an 85, almost 86% consent rate, opt-in rate for that age population. So, we are testing most of those kiddos. The next box down is a reflection of what we did in January through May of the prior school year, 165,000 tests with an average positivity rate of 5/10 of a percent. And then on the right side of the slide are the breakdown by schools, so high school, middle school, and it's comparative. It'll show you last year versus this year, the numbers tested so far and the positivity rate. And with that, I'll take questions or get out of the way so Dr. Okaranza can start. Yes, ma'am?
Lindy, just real quick. So, for our middle school and high school, we're testing those students as they self-identify with symptoms or things of that nature. In our elementary, we test them every Monday. How does that, or how does that work?
So, for the elementary aged children or those who are 12 and under, which may include some middle school students, we're testing those every Monday. And our goal is to test them as soon as they arrive at school, so that if we identify a positive, they're immediately isolated and sent home, which alleviates the need for contact tracing because we catch them at the beginning of the day before they've had time to sit and visit with their classmates. At the other levels where students are largely vaccinated, we test if they ask us to, if their parent says they're symptomatic, we'll test. But generally, it's based on the nurse's assessment that they need to be tested. Keep in mind, we have lots of allergies, symptoms, lots of flu bugs, stomach bug going around. So, we've got kiddos that don't feel good, and we've tested, I think that said, 200 or 185 at the high schools in August. And also, keep in mind, you can see that's a 2.7% positivity rate. Well, you're testing those that don't feel good. So, we're not testing a broad population. It's not surveillance testing. It is a specified audience who doesn't feel well to begin with them and ask us to test them, which is why you see a 2.7% rate there. Did that answer your question, ma'am? Yes? Anything else? Yes, sir?
For the kids that are, say, if we have a positive case, and when we do the contact tracing, what happens to the little kids that have been exposed?
So, the contact tracing involves several factors. We look at, first of all, were you within the desk divider with a substitute? So, they can still come to school, but they are quarantined effectively in a different classroom. And then there are some parents who say, "No, you will not. You will not quarantine them by themselves. I want them back in the regular classroom," and TEA says they have the right to do that. Obviously, we emphasize, "Let us rapid test, please," and will you ask them to wear a mask? And then we monitor symptoms.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the hospitalization. I read, or I saw on TV that the governor has ordered a lot of the COVID cases that are from around the state where the hospitals are in overflow. They can't handle them. Are they coming here to El Paso and in our hospitals at this point and being counted as part of the hospitalization?
So, I think that's probably a better question for Dr. Okaranza. I can tell you that I've read the same thing in the press that you have read, but I think he's obviously more versed in that.
Yeah. I just want to know how many of our own community members have come down with the COVID and are hospitalized, because even though the hospitalization has gone up, I just want to know how much of it is due to the increase from transfer of patients from other parts of the state.
Certainly. And perhaps you can answer that in just a moment.
But before we do that.
Yes, sir.
Also, as far as part of our safety in our schools to mitigate the spread of COVID, parents, do we still have the dividers at the desk at school?
Parents, yes. We have dividers at every campus. They are not routinely utilized. If a parent requests it, then we put it up at the student's desk.
Okay. Do we have shields?
I'm sorry, do we have what?
The shields.
Yes. Anyone that wants a shield may have a shield. And in fact, I have interpreted Dr. Okaranza's order for face covering because it was more broad than last time. So, we are allowing them to wear a face shield if they absolutely refuse to wear this type of face covering.
Are we also providing hand sanitation at every?
Hand sanitizer in every classroom, in every common area. As you can see, we have numerous bottles around this room. You will find that at every campus in many locations.
So, we are following the safety plan that was developed way before this start of the school. So, I just want to know that they are in place, they are being utilized, and they are accessible, especially the dividers. I think that that helps me as a parent understand that my child has another level of protection.
Yes, sir. And CDC recommends layered security measures. And so, when the mask mandate wasn't in place, we still recommended it, and we still provided masks to all visitors and guests. We provide the hand sanitizer. We disinfect daily. We disinfect specifically if a positive case has been identified in a classroom. We obviously specifically disinfect that area. We disinfect common areas. We are following that guidance from CDC in terms of layered security measures to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone.
And common areas like the cafeteria or the?
Cafeteria hallways, bathrooms.
Or the bathrooms. How often are they sanitized?
Several times a day.
Okay. So, there is a timetable for, if somebody goes and sanitizes them?
Yes, sir.
And you have a record of?
We were keeping custodial charts. I haven't inspected one lately, but I know that we have them, and that's what the recommendation has been. So, I assume we're still?
I think that would be helpful to know that they are being recorded and put on records. That way, we have that, that they are being implemented.
All right.
But that was it. Anybody else have any questions?
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
For middle school, and we got kids changing classes, how are we sanitizing as the kids go out? Who's doing the sanitation? The teachers? A custodian? How's that word?
The CDC's current guidance says that it is unlikely that the spread will occur on hard surfaces. So, last year, where we were wrapping every desk with bleach between classes, that's not required. Regular soap and water daily is sufficient. The only time we fog or heavily disinfect with bleach or another EPA-approved solution is when we know there's been a positive case in that classroom at that desk. Otherwise, we clean it daily with soap and water, which CDC says is sufficient. That's classroom, mind you, not common areas. Yes, sir.
On the notification, when the student shows up and he is not attending class, is there a code that the teachers can know that there is a situation?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
If the student, you know, is marked absent.
Okay.
And a lot of times, there's justification that the parent called in, that the child was sick, or they had another, went to the doctor. Is there something for, if a student turns up positive, is that, or is, possibly has suspected of being a COVID case? Is that anything in there? Or is that?
So, if the student is absent from school, I don't have a way to say they're absent because of COVID unless the parent discloses that to me or unless we receive notification from the Health Department through a test method of some, at another location.
So, and my other question is, so, let's say we do get notification. Will the nurse or somebody come and tell the teacher that, to be aware that we had a student that did show up?
It depends on the close contact tracing, on contact tracing. If that's been determined that they are high-risk close contacts, then yes. But if the teacher's vaccinated and the student wasn't in class since last Friday and it's Tuesday, then they're not considered close contacts because they haven't been in contact with the student for, in the last 48 hours.
But there is a strategy to monitor the situation for that class and for that teacher, just to make sure that there is no infection developing, because it does take a few days for that.
We closely monitor. When we know about a positive case, we closely monitor and we notify close contacts, either because the Health Department has told us there's a positive case and they've contact traced, or because we've identified the positive case and we've contact traced.
And another question is, because we have rapid testing, do we utilize that and just to reassure everyone that it is safe?
If the parent has given us consent, then yes, we can rapid test on the spot. So, they'd go to the nurse's office if it's not Monday, and the nurse could test. Or, based on surveillance testing and the median incubation period of five and a half days, we are now in a position to catch them routinely. So, because we're testing everyone, if that student hadn't tested positive, comes to school, maybe doesn't feel great, we're going to catch them on the Monday, and they're going home. If they were around someone else, we'll catch that someone else at the end of the incubation period, the very next Monday. Now, that's all provided. We have consent to test, and we don't have consent to test for roughly 15% of our students.
And if the teacher requests it, is it available for them?
If the teacher requests testing for themselves?
For themselves.
Oh, absolutely. We typically will say, "Look, if you're vaccinated and you're not symptomatic, it's really a waste of a test, but if it makes you feel better, we'll do it."
Well, reassurance is always, you know.
Absolutely. And I test lots of people in that parking lot right out there.
All right. Thank you.
I got one last one, because you brought up some attendance. How, I don't know if this is a question to you, Ms. Leeper, or, I know that we have kids that are saying, "Can we?"
I know that we have kids that are sick. We recommend that if you feel sick, you stay home. And obviously, we're trying to be sympathetic to the kids staying home. How does that work with our kids and attendance? I guess, I know it's, attendance is obviously important, TA-wise. How does that work?
So if you're asking me about, did I, so say I've identified a high-risk close contact and we've said, look, we recommend you stay home. If they stay home, then they're, they get remote conferencing support for which they're counted present.
Okay.
Okay, so they have that alternative. Also, they can come to the classroom and be in an isolation quarantine classroom, if you will, or they can return directly. So there is something in place to address those kids who are sent home. And even those who are sick, they can have remote conferencing support if they feel well enough to attend school.
You brought up another. So say I had this happen to me this week. My grandson wasn't feeling well, sore throat and everything else. He got tested, went to doctor, it's allergies. But the thing is, if a parent sees that it's just allergies, he's having a cold or something, it would be prudent to keep him home maybe three days. But the policy is that after three days, they'd need a doctor's note. Is that, or can we waiver that?
I don't think we can. I think that's a policy set by the state.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to know because it does cause the parent to take time to go take the child to the doctor. And to see the doctor right now is like
Very difficult to get in.
I myself had to go to urgent care because I couldn't see my doctor. So it is becoming very difficult to, for a parent to take a child to the doctor immediately and to get that note. So I just want to know if there was any way that we could get around that, but apparently not. These are unusual times, that's for sure.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Couple of questions, kind of piggybacking on, trustee was Theo. So do, I know we had this discussion, but just want to make sure we bring it up publicly. For our classrooms, as far as elementary, middle school and high school, are we providing wipes, just in the, bleach wipes, just in the event that the teachers want to make sure that they have sanitized their classrooms, be it during transition or after school? I want to make sure that they have the supplies that they need and they're not having to pay anything out of their own pockets, just in case that they, they feel that's necessary and I want to make sure that is done.
So as we've discussed, wipes, especially bleach wipes, are very difficult to obtain still. So what we provide is the bleach solution with paper towels, which they can use as frequently as they like. We have a limited inventory and that is being distributed to classrooms. You may also remember that because of EPA guidance and CDC guidance, students can't clean. So it has to be custodians, which we know now through CDC is okay to do daily versus after classes or between classes. So yes, there are wipes, limited wipes that are made available. They are not name brand, but they do have bleach. We also have the bleach solution that is available if a teacher wants that in their classroom and is willing to do the wipe down.
And we have ordered them because they are in back order and difficult to obtain. We are on like some waiting list or something like that to ensure that once supplies do return, we are, we are on point, ready to receive those supplies.
Yes, but we would not distribute those on, we can't, quite frankly, we can't afford bleach wipes for every student to have a can at their desk. But the bleach solution, we do have them ordered, but we don't have sufficient quantities to do, I think what you're asking me about, which is a bleach wipe container at every desk. No?
No, not at every desk. I would just want them in the classroom. I don't want the teachers or parents to have to pay that out of pocket. I want the teachers to have that type of supplies available to them for safety precautions and to be able to do what they need to do to maintain their classroom.
So absolutely, we're providing any solution that we're using. We're not asking parents to send wipes. We're not asking parents for those supplies. I can't always promise that somebody in the classroom hasn't asked for that. I can tell you, as you know, we provide all school supplies, which included hand sanitizer and many things like that. But we're also still providing solutions for cleaning the classroom.
As long as they're in back order and we are in line, I'm good with that. Another question for, for students that have been identified as having COVID, that's used elementary as an example. And they have siblings in the, in the district and their, those siblings were not positive. How are we handling those cases?
How are we what?
How are we, how are we handling, because parents have concerns if, if one of my kids has COVID, I don't want to send them to school in the event that I might infect other kids because one of them already has COVID. We live together. They've been exposed. Are we, what are we doing with those kids that have been exposed after being in the classroom and are home with their siblings?
So if we're talking about elementary who are unvaccinated, TEA says they still get a choice. But obviously, if it's a household member, we stress, please keep them home. And if you can't keep them home because it interferes and you are at risk of losing your employment, then we have an alternative classroom where you can send them and we will keep them isolated and monitor their symptoms to ensure we don't infect classmates.
And in cases like that, they don't need the medical, the three-day doctor's excuse or they are excused for a certain number of days? Is it five?
Well, if they're doing either virtual, remote conferencing at home, they're counted present. There's no three-day. And if they're in class in the isolation quarantine classroom, there's no absence.
So the siblings then will automatically have access to that virtual or the remote learning?
Absolutely.
Anybody in the household that's in our district?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else?
Now I think we're ready for Dr. Ocaranza.
Dr. Ocaranza.
Thank you, Ms. Sleeper.
They'll bring up your presentation and you can just press the arrow and I will go forward or you can do that. All right.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, President Ochoa, Superintendent De La Torre. Thank you for this opportunity to come and give you some information on the COVID-19 situation in our community. It has been a great pleasure to be working very closely with Dr. De La Torre, with Ms. Sleeper, which have been excellent partners in not only for COVID-19, for many other health-related issues that we can be of assistance. But they've been wonderful partners. We work very closely with them. And I want to assure the community that they're doing everything possible to keep the students, the teachers and the staff safe. They're working very meticulously to follow the protocols. We provide the recommendations. And they've been doing great in how they implement those plans. As mentioned before, these are very tough times. These are very challenging times. But we as El Paso are resilient and we're going to be coming out of this very victorious. And one of the best examples is on the vaccination that Ms. Sleeper already have shown you how well we're doing on the vaccination compared to the rest of the state. To begin with my presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of what the Delta variant is because there's still a lot of the questions and it's quite confusing sometimes when we talk about viruses, infectious agents, something that people cannot touch or see, but causes disease. Then we're going to be moving to how the virus spreads, then the state of our community, and also how the situation within the school-aged children are. So this is the picture of the COVID-19 Delta variant. So people might think that the Delta variant is something different than the COVID-19. Well, it is the same COVID-19, but it has made some changes, which makes him a lot stronger. Stronger in the way that it's going to be transmitted a lot faster and a lot easier because a lot of, most of the patients or the people that have the Delta variant produce a lot more virus or replicates a lot more. And people, they say that it's about 1,000 times more of the virus that you have in the nasopharynx than the regular COVID-19. So the Delta variant, before it used to call the Indian variant, the B1617.2, the scientific name, first identified in India in 2020 at the end of, about December. But by the time of April comes, it was the most predominant strain or variant in India. And from there also was coming to be most prevalent variant around the world. There is some mutations on the spike protein, which in the next slide, I'll show you what the spike protein, which is the projections I have from the surface, in which it attaches a lot easier to the receptors in the body. This variant has proven to be a lot more infectious, meaning that you can infect a lot more people by one that comes infected. It has the higher affinity or it just identifies and identifies a lot better with those receptors in the body. That makes it a lot easier to infect somebody. It replicates a lot faster, meaning that it's going to create a lot more of the symptoms and a lot faster. The incubation period is still within two to 14 days. And that makes it very challenging because there's a period that is asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. And about 25% of those patients may never present any symptoms, but infect a lot more, a lot more of the close contacts that are around them. And it also has the potential to escape the immune system. This is the picture, how it attaches to the cells. And some of those mutations on the spike protein are going to make it a lot easier to invade the cells and replicate within our cells. As far as the people, how do they get infected with the COVID? We hear over and over that it's by droplets. The droplets are small particles that can fall from the mouth or the nasopharynx if those patients are infected. And it can fall within the six feet. That's where it comes, the six feet, as far as the distance in that we need to have. Studies have come to show that probably within three feet or from the infected patient to three feet, that's when you have most of the infections. Beyond the three feet, then starts waning down the way that you can get infected with the COVID-19. But depending on activities that we do, it can be aerosolized in which those particles are a lot smaller and can be suspended in the air for a lot, a lot longer of the time, depending on activity. On the graph, we show how much particles that you can expel by just loud singing, by talking, by just normal talking, by breathing, in which the face mask comes to give that protection to the person that is in front of you. And also it's going to trap some of those particles that are going to be expelled from the patient in case it is infected with the COVID-19. The symptoms for the Delta variant are the same as with the COVID-19, but the same with many other respiratory viruses such as the RSV, rhinovirus, common just seasonal allergies that we're seeing at this moment in El Paso, that many people have the rainy nose and the nasal congestion. It is quite difficult for us as healthcare providers to discern which one is going to be the COVID-19, which one is going to be the RSV influenza. We have some testing, which the school is very proactive in finding and testing those students, teachers and staff when they come. And that is a great strategy that, again, I need to commend Ms. Sleeper and Dr. De La Torre for doing that proactively. But also, some of the testing that we have in the offices is for influenza, for strep throat, et cetera, et cetera, which many of us have had when we've gone to the doctor's office, which at this moment is extremely easy for every single one of us. One thing that I wanted to point out as far as the vaccination, the real-life vaccination protection from the United Kingdom that came. And I put it in this slide and I've been presenting this slide because it is striking. Some people might be afraid of getting the second dose of the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, which is a two-dose vaccine, basically because they're afraid of the reactions to the vaccine. But when we have only one dose of that Pfizer vaccine, the protection is about 35%, which if you get exposed to somebody that is sick, you might have a breakthrough infection. You might have an infection despite having only one dose. Many people might feel confident that only one dose is going to protect them enough and is going to keep them healthy. But they need to complete the two-dose of the series and that's going to bring the protection up to 88%. That is in the real life, not just in the lab, but it's a real-life study that it was published in one of the very reputable scientific journals around the world. So what is happening in El Paso? Well, El Paso is experiencing an upward trend of positive cases. That has been quite concerning because every week we see an increase of approximately 34% every week. And it has been increased about 150% in the last month, other than seven-day rolling average on the new cases. We, about a month ago, were in the moderate community transmission and rapidly changed to substantial. And now we're in the high community transmission based on the standards from the CDC, which it says that if we have more than 100 cases per 100,000 population for the last seven days, it will be considered such and we are. And very, very, very important, four out of five people that we're finding positive are unvaccinated. So this is what the total cases have done from the CDC week number five up to last Saturday, which was the end of CDC week number 33. We see how initially we were doing so good, the number of cases were in a very nice downward trend. And all of a sudden, summer came and we started seeing an upward trend that we don't see that it's slowing down or plateauing at all. If we compare to the cases per capita to the state of Texas, yes, we're doing better, but still, we continue to see the upward trend. Some of the bigger cities in the state of Texas are seeing a very, very big problem. Why? Because their hospitalization has gone up due to COVID. But it is not only COVID that they need to treat. They need to treat their patients or their residents for a heart attack. They need to treat them for the diabetes. They need to treat them for the high blood pressure they got on control or stroke, et cetera, et cetera. So if it was only due to COVID, then definitely they would have a little bit more room to work with. But we need to work in the hospital with many other conditions besides the COVID. These are the cases by age group. And at CDC number 31, two weeks ago, the drivers of the new cases were the young adults, 18 to 45 were the ones. But now we see that the case, the pediatric cases are just skyrocketing and going up in the number of cases that we're finding positive. As you can see, one thing that is also concerning is that the population of 65 and older, they're going up also. And many of those are vaccinated, so those are the ones that can get infected because they have a lot of multiple comorbidities and that can make them still vulnerable to developed infection complications and unfortunately passing away from the COVID-19. COVID-19 is not just another cold. COVID-19 is not just another flu. COVID-19 is a virus that is killing a lot of people, has torn homes, has torn a lot of our families. And the suffering that we saw in October, November, and even up to now, it is unbearable to continue to see. The hospitalizations also, we continue to see an increase and it has increased in about 75% over the last month. 85% of the people are unvaccinated. Again, we see that the people that are getting affected by the COVID are those that are not vaccinated. The protection that the vaccine confers to the individuals are very, very good as long as they complete their immunization schedule. And these hospitalizations are more common in adults. As we go up in age, the hospitalization also goes up. This is the trend that we have seen on the hospitalization. There is an upward trend. But even though we see that it might go down for one week, but we continue to see the upward trend that we have in the hospitalizations in El Paso. The utilization of the hospital beds in El Paso, the vast majority is from other conditions other than COVID. That's where you haven't seen that the COVID percentage of hospitalizations has gone up that much, but it's still, it is going up. Not to levels that we saw before, but it's still concerning to see how those levels of hospitalization are going to continue to increase. And we're not even in the fall season where we start seeing some viruses such as the RSV, which attacks the little children. Influenza, that also fills our hospitals with a lot of those individuals that have also comorbidities that makes them more vulnerable to influenza. The hospitalization compared to Texas. We both, we see that in Texas, it was extremely high, the trend that we see in the hospitalization, not as much in El Paso, but still, a positive trend that we continue to see. If we look at the hospitalizations by age, we can see how the 65 and older are the ones that are starting to grow in that percentage of people that are getting hospitalized. But the adults also, we're seeing, and sometimes we're seeing younger adults getting hospitalized. Our community has many vulnerabilities. The fact that we have multi-generational homes, the fact that we have a large percentage of our population without medical insurance, without having to have the means to go and take care of those. Many people cannot go across the border to buy the medication, which is a fraction of the cost of the medications here in the U.S. And it is something that we live in our community and something that has been affected as well. The pediatric hospitalization has remained extremely low, but we cannot keep our, we cannot let our guard down in that regards. As we see more positive cases in the children, it is expected that we might start seeing a lot more hospitalizations. This is what we're trying to depict on this graph. How as we have an increase in the cases, we're starting to see an increase in the hospitalization in the pediatric population. And this graph shows how much protection we're having by just getting vaccinated. I can stress enough the importance of the vaccination as another, a very, very important I can stress enough the importance of the vaccination as another, a very, very important tool of the foundation of that multi-layer plan that Ms. Sleeper said. The foundation is extremely strong, it is very effective, and it is safe, and we can see that just by getting vaccinated, we can decrease the risk of getting positive by about 23-fold. The hospitalization, again, like 24 decrease in the risk of hospitalization if you're vaccinated. So what is happening in our schools? Now that we started this new academic year, we know the benefits that in-person instruction is. As a pediatrician, I can tell you how much I appreciate those teachers, how I appreciate those educators that do their best to try to educate and bring those children up to speed. Last year was extremely challenging, not just for the teachers, for the parents also, and for every single family. So the vaccination is paramount, as I mentioned before, but also as another one of those elements of the multi-layer plan that we need to have in the schools, which you already have and having implemented since the beginning of the pandemic. The universal face mask use is another one. Isolation and quarantine, which Ms. Sleeper spoke at length. Other non-pharmacological interventions such as teaching our kids how to wash their hands, how to cover the cough. I still remember very vividly with the H1N1 pandemic, how our teachers were doing a phenomenal job teaching our children how to cover the cough with the internal part of their elbow. And they were coming home telling their parents how to do that, and that was great. Our teachers do a phenomenal job, and our children are going to learn because our teachers are another very great role model in what the good behaviors, good interventions we have in public health, even though they're too little to know that they're doing a public health intervention that is extremely important. And unfortunately, the transmission of COVID-19 is going to be happening within the schools as we have more cases and as we have a higher rate of transmission within our community. That's why we try to also implement either non-pharmacological interventions across the community as well as providing the hospitals and those pharmacological tools that they need to treat the patients that really need that care. This is the layer plan that we had talked about, and this is a great depiction from somebody in Australia. But as we know that every single innovation is not perfect, it's going to have some little holes, but if we have a combination of interventions, that's going to make those plans very, very successful. And that's what the studies have shown, that when we have a comprehensive layer plan within the school system, then the students, the teachers, and everybody benefits because they're going to remain healthy. And that's why we're going to continue seeing the benefits of instituting different strategies and different ways to keep everybody safe. The number of cases of the school-aged children, I put this two lines because that was the summer vacation and we were in summer vacation. To the left of the yellow line is the previous academic year. The right of the red line is this academic year, and we can see how it has increased. And this is the cases per 1,000 school-aged children. The percentage of positive cases on the children has increased, and also at the end of the last school year increased, then we saw a decrease, and now it's increasing again along with the young adults that we're seeing to be affected, which could be the parents of those children, can be the teachers, can be many other young adults that are working very hard. The school-aged children cases, as we can see, high schoolers, which is the brown line, middle schoolers, which is the blue line, are on top of the positive cases. Those cases are preventable. How? By getting them vaccinated. Simple as that. We would expect that the people that are, or the group of positive cases would be the ones that are not eligible to receive the vaccine, which is the zero to five or the six to 10. But as we can see, it's the high schoolers and the middle schoolers that are leading the number of positive cases, which I hope to continue to see an increase in the vaccination rate for those age groups. And that's going to be bringing us a lot of the protection that we really need to continue have in our community. Fortunately, our community continued to request the vaccine, and we've been able to provide the vaccine and with the help in collaboration with its lead independent school district, we've been able to immunize a lot of people. Those pop-up events have been wonderful and has been one of the tools that we have to make the vaccine available to anybody who requests it, to make it and bring it here to their community, to their neighborhood, so they wouldn't have to travel that far. We are able to provide the vaccine without the appointment, just show up and get the vaccine. And those are the things that help us reach out a lot more people that haven't received the vaccine. Now with the full approval of the Pfizer vaccine by the FDA and the CDC, we're expecting, and hopefully, a lot of those people that were afraid that it was used in an emergency use authorization, now that it's fully approved, they can come and receive the vaccine and also protect themselves and protect their household. With that, I thank you very much for the attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Ocaranza. I think that was very informative, but I still have that same question, hospitalizations. Do you have the number of hospitalizations that are from out of this area that have been transported here?
I don't have the number of patients, but I know that we have received some patients from other communities that needed hospitalization.
Is that a significant number, or is it just?
It's a very small number, but I don't have exactly what number it is. Any changes on a daily basis if we receive patients?
Because you provide that as part of your indicator, and I think it would help for the community to know how many here in El Paso are really getting in that area that are being hospitalized or are in the ICU.
One thing that I can tell you is that if we receive a patient from another community, we don't count them in our hospitalization because that will give skewed data that is not going to be indicative of what is happening in our community.
Oh, so you don't include them?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Are they part of that number, or are they not part of that?
No.
Okay.
No, they're not part of that.
So that puts me a little bit at ease as far as what you presented, because that was a burning question in my mind, how that was, how that was reported.
Yes, and one thing that is important to know is that the healthcare resources here in El Paso, meaning the staff beds that we have, are not very many. We have, we're considered a health professional shortage, meaning that we have a lot less physicians, nurses per capita than other larger communities. We have less beds also, and we need to take care of those limited resources that we have.
Another question was, I see that the children are really at risk at this point, and especially our schoolchildren. How are you, are the school districts reporting that as part of their report weekly, or is that something that you get from some other sources?
No, we work very closely with all the school districts, and they report the positive cases to the health department. Sometimes the parents go and do testing or they become positive, and we are aware before the school districts, and definitely we notify the families and we notify the school districts whether we're having a bigger problem in a particular school, for example. But we continuously monitor those numbers and the situation because definitely we inform our school officials if there is any situation arising that might not be aware with them.
Do you get information from some of our charter schools or some of our private schools?
We receive information from the schools. We talk to the school nurse, which they work really, really hard.
Okay, so encompasses the whole community here as far as schools and protecting our schoolchildren, because what happens in the West Side can affect the East Side or the Valley, whatever. I mean, everybody's in the same predicament, so we have to be aware as to how, it can't be an isolated area. It will, it will involve all the passive community because we all live together here.
Exactly. We're a community, but we're also a region, and we see a lot of children that move back and forth from all the, the whole region as well.
Have we have any indication of our, have any of our patients that come from across the border?
Well, what we try to do when we have positive cases, we establish the primary place of residence and see, the epidemiologists do an extensive questioning, what is happening, where they go to school, where did they work, where do they live? So that's part of the contact tracing and part of the investigation that we do through the epidemiology department. But there's, there's a lot of children that come from across the border.
Yeah, and that's a lot of work, trying to trace everything they've been, where they've been, what they're doing, and where they're going to even, if they do show positive, where are they going to stay quarantined as far as to protect the rest of the community?
Yes, definitely, and we communicate with the Department of Health in Juarez as well.
Okay.
So we can let them know. That is another one of the reasons why when somebody shows and requests a vaccine, we don't tell them that they need to be from El Paso.
No.
As long as they come and request the vaccine, we give the vaccine because we, we all participate in protecting the whole region, and having those pop-up events have been very successful. And those children and people, because the large amount of people that can freely cross the border have come and requested the vaccination in this side of the border as well. So we're happy to provide the vaccine because we know that we're contributing to vaccinate and protect the region as a whole and not just a particular section of the community.
One more question. I read that booster vaccine, which I think will, will help a lot with mitigating this Delta variant as far as our community. When do you expect that to be available to everyone?
We expect that the end of September, we're going to be doing the booster shots to the community. Right now, we're administering the third dose of the vaccine, which is indicated for the people that have immunocompromised, which is a very tiny, tiny group of people, people that are under treatment for cancer, people that have some autoimmune diseases that have, that are taking medication to reduce the immune system. Those people that are born with certain immunocompromising conditions, also those, because to begin with, they didn't mount the sufficient response to protect them with the first two doses of the vaccine, so that's why it is recommended that they receive a third dose of the vaccine. But for the population in general, at the end of September, we're going to start doing the booster, the booster dose as they will indicate it from the CDC.
And if we do get those boosters out and the more of the population get that booster, what in your estimation will that do to our, to our numbers as far as, will that help control the spread of this, this terrible variant of the Delta?
Yes, and what we expect, the more people we give the booster dose, the less hospitalization we're going to be able to see. We know that it is the vaccine extremely effective at preventing hospitalization and preventing death. So by having a booster dose is going to even help us a lot more to reduce that hospitalization or to prevent the hospitalization due to COVID-19. We still need to be very cautious with our loved ones that have multiple comorbidities because even with the vaccine, we know that they still can get infected. We know that some of the younger adults might not exhibit many symptoms, but are able to infect a lot more. So we need to be very, very cautious with that.
And you said that would be most likely available to the public at the end of September?
Yes, most likely.
Which is, we start next week, so.
And the other question that people have is, when is going to be the vaccine available for children less than 12? Nobody has said much, but I expect and I hope that we see it by November. They're doing trials right now. The FDA delayed a little bit on the, on the approval or on the review in their trials because they requested a lot more, a bigger group of the population because they wanted to see the frequency of the myocarditis, the inflammation of the heart related to the vaccine, which is not very common at all. And I want to tell the public that if they're hesitant to give the vaccine to their children, this is not a very common occurrence to get the inflammation of the heart because of the vaccine. It is a lot more common to have inflammation of the heart because of the COVID. That is for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Thank you. That was one of my questions. My other one is, what health hazards are associated with wearing a mask for a prolonged period of time?
I'm sorry.
What, what health hazards are associated with wearing a mask for?
What is the protection associated to the mask?
What health hazards? Like if I'm wearing my mask, what health hazards am I putting myself at risk for?
Oh, there is barely no hazard wearing the mask. Some people, some people have said that it was going to increase the carbon dioxide. Studies have done in, published, have shown that there's no effect on the oxygenation of the blood or the recirculation of the carbon dioxide by the wear of the mask. There hasn't been much of the negative effects of wearing the mask.
Are there any health conditions that would be exasperated by wearing the mask?
Yeah, there's some health conditions that can be excluded from wearing the mask, and that one can be taken on a case-by-case by their personal physician, and definitely they can discuss those. And basically, there's population that are extremely high risk of getting sick, and definitely if they're not going to be wearing the mask, they need to be extremely cautious in how they go out and interact with other people, especially now in the, in the winter season that we see a lot of the respiratory viruses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ocaranza. I have a few, a few questions. First of all, how, how do we identify the Delta variant?
The way to identify the Delta variant is by taking those positive samples that we take from sick people that are positive for the COVID. We need to have the sample with enough viral material to send it for genetic sequencing. And the way that they do the genetic sequencing is that they grab those viruses, they open the envelope, they extract that genetic information, and they put it, I'll put it in simple terms, they spread it so they can see and compare it to the original virus that they had from China. Once they see the differences in the viruses, meaning the mutations that they have, they classify as Alpha, Beta, Delta, et cetera, et cetera. And that's how you do it, and it's more for informational purposes because the treatment for the Delta variant is going to be the same as for just regular COVID, whether it's another variant or just a regular COVID.
Thank you. How many years of experience do you have as a medical physician? How many years of experience do you have practicing medical care?
How many tests?
No, no, your experience as a doctor.
How many patients have I treated?
No, no, years of experience for yourself as a doctor. How many years have you been a doctor?
Well, how many years I've been in practice? I graduated from my pediatric residency in 1999.
Okay, so given your experience and where we're at right now with the pandemic, as far as wearing masks and the various different masks, there's cloth masks, there's the N95, there's all different masks. Given your opinion as a medical physician, is it safer for our classrooms to, our students to be wearing masks in the classroom? Does that classroom, is it safer if they're wearing masks or if they're not wearing masks?
The classroom is safer by the children wearing the mask.
Thank you. And does it, if they're wearing cloth masks, will that, what, what amount of safety will that provide in the classroom?
Well, the difference in the mask depends on the material, depends on how the children wear it, depending on how much saturation the mask is having. So if you have a mask that is a cloth mask, it has to have several layers to it so it can provide better protection. If you have something like the surgical mask, also that also provides better protection. A KN95, and some, some of the experts in Minnesota have mentioned that the way to do it is to have the KN95 or the N95, which is the ones that provide most of the, or the best protection for the wearer because of the way that it filters and the way the material is.
So the bottom line, in your, in your medical opinion, is whether it's a cloth mask or any other type of mask, wearing a mask will give you a layer of protection versus not?
That is correct. The mask is another layer of protection within that, multiple layers of that plant that needs to be established.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Ocaranza, and thank you for, for coming down here and, and giving, providing that information that we needed as far as us as a school board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to present to you.
Thank you.
At this time, President Ochoa, Ms. Champagne, she is here and available to the board. Should you have any questions relative to her recent audit?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, and all Board members. May I introduce my full staff before I go over the summary? Yes, I have my senior staff, Amy Sanchez, and Staff Auditor Two, Rebecca Garcia, Staff Auditor One, Rodriguez Chavez, and my Department Secretary, Norma Minor. They are my best supporters, and they do have a good work ethic and high work standards. Thank you all very much, to remember. I'm going to go over rather quickly about what we have been doing June, July, and this part of August up to last week. Next slide, please. And we have, um, okay, so for these two months, we have been doing, we have 28 active projects, and we have completed so far 32 projects. Among these, we have, uh, ongoing 28 projects within there, like four high schools, four middle school, eight elementary schools, campus audit, five departments audit, and we have two functions reviewed and five programs reviewed ongoing. That's the overall project status, and then two headline cases do that. I had, um, explained to y'all with the project tracking, uh, we are changing it to have five functions to group all the projects. All the schools, elementary school will be elementary school, middle school, and high schools. High school including all the special campuses. Elementary school include all the pre-k's. Um, for finance, it's clear, HR, it's clear, operations is clear. Now, some of those departments or programs, they are school-wide or they are more like, uh, not related to a specific division, so we try to group them into the school support. So now we're gonna have all these five functions when we do the project tracking. That will be easier for you all to, to follow. Now, in the report distribution, we continue to issue report to eight of you and CC, three chief officers, and the department head or the principal and their supervising associates. That's, the report distribution continues. And in the report itself, since early August, I realize that we should have more clear indication in the audit report about a governing body, so since early August, when we issue audit report and we have the cover page, we didn't change. And then the second page is similar to an executive summary, but it's clearly indicated it's to who and what is needed to be done. And then the third page will be table of the content. And from fourth page on will be the detail of the audit. Usually includes the summary of the general operation of that unit that we audited, either school or department or program. And then we have the audit observation and recommendation, then audit attachment. And that concludes the presentation. Of course, without saying it, your support, your understanding is the backbone of all these functions. And then we do appreciate all the department, all the schools, their support and their cooperation. It really, it's all needed to make an audit to be a valuable audit.
Any questions from the Champagne? I have, as always, um, how are we handling now that we are going back face-to-face and conducting these audits? I'm sure that it's different. You have a new staff. Uh, I'm sure they're aware that they have to go down and go to these schools and, and, uh, look at their records and everything. It's not done at your desktop anymore.
Yes, sir. We try to coordinate. We give information to whichever department or campus we audit, and then we coordinate the timing for them to have the records ready for us. And some of the verification we do in person, some of the verification, we borrow the records and review in the office in combination of these.
Another, uh, another, um, development is that now we're going back to school, we're having all these booster clubs, all these fundraisings and everything. Has anybody gone out there to enlighten them as to what is the proper way to do this?
Uh, the, my understanding is the finance, accounting, and payroll director, he has reached out to campuses and to give them a proper training, explanation of any program that's going on. And I think the most recent one is the, the online cash, uh, online cash process, that that should help the campus.
That is to pay for us as parents for any expenditures that we need to provide to the school in order for our children, whether they be in band or whatever. But I'm talking about, uh, like booster clubs and everything. How have they been? Because this is all new to a lot of them. Who is handling the, that part of the training to these, to these specific groups?
Yes, usually, uh, finance division is the one provides all the training. We, are the one, when we do audit, we enforce the process and the procedure.
So if I may, President Ochoa, at leadership in August, the first time we meet with principals for the upcoming school year, we have breakout sessions, and one of those sessions includes fundraising for boosters. It also includes campus fundraising that's done by the staff. Then, um, every booster organization at the beginning of each year, when they intend to raise funds, they have to send a certification to my office indicating that they are either tax exempt or non-tax exempt, that they, and they certify that they have read the training that's provided for booster organizations and that they are going to comply with the rules. They also have to provide us with the names of the officers, and that gets approved and sent back to them before they're allowed to conduct fundraising. Keep in mind, we can teach them, we can tell them, but they are completely separate legal entities over which I don't have any control other than to say, you're authorized to conduct fundraising opportunities or activities on the campus.
Thank you. Because on previous and the other years, you reported that a lot of the deposits weren't properly recorded, or a lot of the expenditures weren't properly recorded when you went to audit them. I just wanna avoid that as much as possible. It will happen, but, you know, as, if we given the, if we provide the training and the instruction, I think that everyone will try to abide by those, um, rules that we, that you have in place as far as the schools and how they accept funds and donations and everything else, because there's paperwork trail for everything. And I just wanna make sure that, because we're starting again, and our booster clubs and everything else is, is new again, maybe a lot of the people that were in the booster clubs before are not there anymore, so because of the, you know, their children graduated or whatever. But I just wanna make sure that, uh, when you audit, that I don't see a lot of those, um, deficiencies in your report, because we lacked the training, we didn't provide the training to them, but you say they have been. So, and that is the responsibility of the each school to at least enlighten them as to what the.
Yes, sir. So, we teach the principals, the principals are, should know. I can't always say that booster organizations immediately notify a principal that they're going to conduct activities, but generally speaking, they do. They get permission from the principals to provide them with the booster manual and teach them or tell them how to learn about their activities. And generally speaking, the president may retire and go on because their children have graduated, but the vice president or the treasurer are moving up in the organization. I don't think Champagne audits booster organizations.
That's a very good point, because they are not district organization. And so that's not within my audit scope.
I think you're talking about campus activities, fundraising by student organizations or those. Yes, sir. So we train them as well during the first principals retreat.
Like the student councils and?
Yes, sir. And then we also have online training. So we require them, the financial person, the budget clerk at each campus to go through that training once a year. It's now online because we recognize it's difficult for them to come in. So they have student activity training, which is that fundraising activity online. And then we have, um, the accountant, if you will, is available to go to the campus to teach them at any time. Those are the ones, those campus organizations are the ones Miss Champagne audits.
Okay. Well, thank you for enlightening me on that. Uh, I kinda bunched them all in and, uh.
Yes.
That's why it's good to talk to you, Champagne, so.
Yes, and it, it, we, our audit scope is the, these students' clubs, activities that, under the district's scope. Now, if this principal needs any assistance related to the booster club or PTO or PTAs, those, um, usually, we would refer them to accounting and payroll for their guidance about what processes, the, the accounting could help them. Uh, if they have any money issues, usually, historically, I would work with security director to go and understand if there's anything that we need to be involved. And usually, I do a little bit of it, understanding before we jump into it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate your coming here before the board. It's been a couple of months. But I, I, I know that you have a good staff and that we expect even better quality work. Well, it is quality work, but more, more, more done here now that we're back to face-to-face. Thank you, Miss Champagne.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Okay, uh, we will now ask the citizens' input, and I apologize for keeping you here so long, but there is a lot of business that we still have to do after this, but thank you for being so patient. You are allowed three minutes to speak. When you hear the buzzer, your time has expired, and we ask that you take your seat so that we may call the next speaker. The buzzer right now is programmed for two minutes, so if you hear the buzzer, you still have another minute. So, uh, I apologize for that, but we didn't get time to program the buzzer. So, uh, please keep on until, uh, this, uh, Ms. Matthews will alert you as to when you have about 10 seconds left, and then your time is up. So, Ms. Lucero, that we have?
Yes, uh, President Ochoa. I have Elia Ortiz. Topic is mental health.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Elia Ortiz, and I'm gonna read a letter she had prepared. So, um, letters to the board. "My son has been experiencing severe mental health problems and has recently been diagnosed with bipolar disorder and anxiety and depression. Since his mental health problems are new to him, he is barely learning to manage and maintain the symptoms of his disorder through medication and therapy. However, my son still has difficulties managing the symptoms, and due to these experiences, severe mood swings that manifest in various ways that are not socially appropriate. One of my son's episodes occurred on May 4th in which he was sent to Cesar Chavez as a result of his actions. I fought that decision and went through every appeal process to bring awareness to the mental health issues my son has been going through. During this, myself and my caseworker, Oscar Lopez, met with Superintendent Dr. Torres and Mr. Vasquez to discuss the issues and bring to his attention how persons with mental illness often do not have control over their cognitive functioning. During this meeting, we were met with hostility and rudeness by Dr. Torres, who stated that my son was, quote, "a liar" and stated that, quote, "bipolar people do get violent," end quote. "Don't get violent," among other statements that were discriminative and offensive towards my son and the mental health community. I left that meeting feeling like Dr. Torres had no sympathy and regard for my son, his situation, or for anyone who experiences mental health problems. Additionally, I feel like his lack of awareness on the complex mental health issues faced by students in the district added to the stigma and stereotypes that students face. Lastly, I left that meeting feeling as if nothing was resolved. On July 16th, I received an apology letter addressing my concerns on the May 4th incident, acknowledging the undue stress that the school district and Eastwood Middle School caused for myself and my son, signed by Dr. Kennedy and Eastwood Principal Ms. Venegas. However, Superintendent Dr. Torres did not sign the letter, and seeing as how he, seeing as he, how he is at the top of the school district, I would assume his signature would be included. I am requesting a sincere apology from Dr. Torres for his insensitive remarks towards my son and towards the mental health community. And I hope that Dr. Torres can be more aware of how to approach and communicate with students and parents who struggle with mental health. Thank you, Ms. Elia Ortiz."
I am the parent of the student. I also am bipolar. I wasn't diagnosed until I was 40. I struggle with it still to this day. As we speak right now, my son is sitting at Vista Mental Health Clinic. And I just wanna add that if you want any, have any questions or wish to know any of the inconveniences and hurt that me and my family and the mental health community experience, when things like this arise, I am free for questions. And if I can help any families that are going through this struggle, please come and ask. And Oscar here is a mental health specialist who can help anybody that needs any, has any questions for him. He can help answer anything you might have. And please, if you need any help, just get ahold of somebody. There's crisis numbers you can call. Uh, my son is a two-time suicide survivor, and it's very hard when you go through this, and it's very hard for teenagers. So please, get ahold of help when you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Next speaker is Adriana Dominguez. Safety protocol.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent De La Torre, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Adriana Dominguez, and I have a child and several nieces and nephews in the Parkland feeder pattern. And I'm here today to continue to advocate for safety in our schools. We heard from Dr. Ocaranza, who is taking great efforts to take care of our community, and we need to continue to do that. I encourage you to be proactive and not reactive. Uh, we're in the third week, fourth week of school already, so I sent my child for three weeks without a mask, with those around her without a mask, and that's absolutely terrifying for a parent that has a child that is unvaccinated. Um, the science is clear, and we need to be proactive. Um, I also encourage you to make sure that you have information readily available for parents. I learned so much tonight of what happens if someone tests positive, what happens if they are quarantined, what options are available. I knew nothing of that, and I think it's up to the district to make sure that our schools are prepared to communicate that to the parents. Our teachers and administrators are completely overwhelmed, and it's not up to them to figure that out. They are there to teach our kids and take care of them, and so we, as the parents, need to know what the policies are, that we were not bothering those teachers and administrators who are trying to work with our kiddos. Um, also in terms of how things are being enforced. Um, if someone chooses not to wear a mask, even though there is a mask policy, what is it? Is it a call to the parent? Is it a district visit? You know, if a school can regulate if a child can have blue hair or not, they can definitely regulate if a child wears a mask or not. Um, and I also continue to, can, continue to advocate that we have more safety protocols. As we saw with all the graphs, which again was mind-blowing, we want to make sure that we have masks, that we have social distancing. Children under 12 are not eligible to be vaccinated, and they're vulnerable, and it's up to us to take care of them. Um, so again, I encourage you to be proactive, not reactive, but really communicate to the parents what is happening. It is absolutely terrifying to have a young one at school, and she loves to be at school, she wants to keep being at school, but not to know what happens every time. Every time she tells me someone was absent, like, oh, my gosh, were they? How would I know? And I have no indications of that, so I would really appreciate additional information. And then also, we're, it's an amazing district, and I think to make it even more amazing is recognizing how to support the healthcare system. Right? We are a community. Dr. Ocaranza mentioned how it is suffering, right? There are more cases of everything happening right now, and we want to make sure that we get the healthcare that we need when it's time to do so. So I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez. Ms. Rosa Ramos regarding masks. Rosa Ramos?
Hi. Good evening, and I thank you for having me here with you. I do have a request from a teacher who would like to remain anonymous. She asked that I speak for her. So, as she says, "I am calling on each of our board members to advocate for our schools, our teachers, our students, our kids, and our health. I am calling on each of you to demonstrate to Texas what it means to be part of a healthy school district that believes in freedom of choice. I am calling on the district to be leaders of El Paso and set the stage for others to follow. As a teacher, I can tell you that parents wouldn't want their kids wearing a mask if they knew how they were wearing them in class. They drop them on the floor, they leave them on the counters, they sweat in them, they touch them frequently, they sneeze and cough into them, and they lose them, they don't replace them daily, and this is middle school students. Can you imagine elementary kids? Even though I offer them fresh masks, most of them decline. How is it healthy to be wearing that same mask for eight hours? How is it healthy to be inhaling these germs collected all day? How is it healthy to be breathing in what you exhale knowing what we exhale 12 to 20 times a minute? If this is truly about health, why are our students crammed into classrooms of 30 kids? Why are our students without refrigerated air? I look at my thermostat, and it is at 80 daily despite it being on high coal. I challenge you to sit in the classroom of 30 with a mask on for eight hours with little to no break. I challenge you to try to learn in that environment. If you truly care about the health of our students, our cafeterias would look healthier. That chocolate milk or juice would be replaced with water because sugar weakens our immune systems. The food would look fresher and healthier to help our immune systems instead of weaken it. I have been with the district since I was in kinder. I started working for the district at 18, and I'm still working with the district as a middle school teacher. I have always felt proud to be a part of the district, and I trust that your choices will be influenced by doing what is right, and I trust that you will not be influenced by politics but by your care for the future of our kids. Now, as a parent, I believe it's my choice to decide what I put on my child. I believe that the school board should not be deciding this. From what I've seen from other school districts in the city and around the state, the way they are enforcing the mask mandate is by threatening students with referrals for dress code violations. That is unethical. Students in third grade and younger are being threatened with detention. Students fourth grade and older are being threatened with in-school suspension, and after the fourth, the fourth day that they don't want to wear a mask, that's going to be four referrals, they're sent to alternative school. This is for a mask. The school dress code isn't even enforced that strictly, but that's the only way you can enforce it. So I ask you to let parents have the choice to decide because it is our children, and we know what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Hazel Ransdale, parental rights, masks.
Okay, so I really don't want to take too much of your time, and I'm certain all of you across the board have received plenty of verbal abuse, so I do not want to add to that. I'm here for my three children and the thousands of children that attend YISD schools, for their physical health, mental health, and of course, their freedom. It seems that unfortunately, they are stuck in the prospire of what is, what has become a political war, and this is wrong. There are some here who've already made up their minds, and regardless of what you hear today, you're going to still vote the same. Now, I just want to assure you that if this is mandated or my children will be punished if they do not wear a mask, I will be dropping them from YISD. I know you gain thousands of dollars per student, so you will lose thousands for my three at least. So I want to read something. I took a photo. I do work in a clinical setting. I see patients every single day, okay? The box of the masks that I use daily state this. I took a photo, okay? It says, "Warning: This product is an ear-lute mask. This product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or other viruses or contaminants. Wearing an ear-lute mask does not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. User is solely responsible for the selection of appropriate personal protective gear or equipment. This is single-use only." This is a photo of the boxes of masks that I use daily. I'm not sure where the doctor gets his information, but there are a lot of risks with our children wearing masks. That's pretty much all that I have to say. So I hope that you all vote on the side of freedom of choice and not trample on our rights as parents to make the decisions for our own children.
Thank you, Ms. Ransdale. Douglas Greenslaw?
Douglas Greenslaw? All right. Everybody's having a good night. Kind of a, kind of a long one, but I appreciate you listening. So I think I wrote down, I wanted to talk about CRT and masks. So CRT, you know, the way I understand it, it's an academic exercise, is how it's been portrayed in the news, but I just want to voice that we should only be teaching, you should only be teaching my children, my two girls, reading, writing, math, you know, the ability to critically think is a good thing. I don't want my kids to be taught that they're oppressors, they're white, I'm white. I grew up a single-parent household with only my mom, poor. I joined the military. I'm not an oppressor. My kids aren't oppressors, so keep that out of the classroom. That's what I'm asking you to do. In addition, the masks, cloth masks don't work. All the studies show that the mask, as has been talked about here, eight hours, they're fooling with the mask, they're messing with the mask. There's a study on toxicity that I can give you a reference for, but anyway, talks about carbon dioxide and how it can cause malformations and also cause infertility or fertility problems in the long term. So I encourage you to look into carbon dioxide, toxicity. Our children, eight hours a day, re-breathing back in this carbon dioxide, it can't be good. It's not natural. The study was about smoking and how carbon dioxide affects smokers. And so I encourage you to look into that. Please do. Also, I wanted to say, we should definitely keep the kids in school. We should keep them because the only ones, the primary ones affected by kids not being in school are lower-income, only 12% under $25,000 can work from home, only 32% between $50,000 and $75,000 can work from home. It's only like a third or less that are even able to work from home. So keep that in mind, and don't go back to no school because it affects, you know, the blue-collar folks that are working very hard, providing support to those that can work from home. So don't do that. Keep masks away from the mandate. Tell the parents if they want to send their kids to school with their masks, they can wear the mask. My kids, I don't want them to wear a mask, okay? So no mask mandate, please. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Woodruff, masks.
Okay. I think it's right here. Okay. Thank you. President Ochoa, Members of the Board, Trustee Dr. Del Torre, YISD Executive Cabinet and Guest, my name is Gary Woodruff. I'm a physics teacher currently teaching at Bella High School and a proud father of eight grandkids, which four are in the district that goes to Sagel and Bella Middle School. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about mask mandate. I want to read a statement from a fellow teacher. It says, "If public health is the main issue, then consider giving the same energy to the daily behavior and interaction with the mask that exacerbates the potential spread of the virus." And now I'm also going to have concerns about mental and social issues with our kids. The gap has grown big, guys, with the COVID virus, and it's going to grow bigger on our kids' education, and we can't have that. Try to teach ELL kids with a mask on. Try to teach our English language with a mask on. So, but anyway, let me go ahead and continue what I was going to say here, but I have a daughter that teaches two, three, four-year-olds, and she started, began a pandemic and never left the classroom and taught three, four-years-old, and they didn't wear a mask, and there were some families that might have got the COVID, but none of the kids, at least one or two, and she's still teaching two and three-year-olds. But guys, the masks on the kids are going to, well, let me give you some examples. Little kids, and it was shared before, they pick the mask off the ground, they sneeze in them. Sometimes parents find their kids come home with someone else's mask because they liked it better, so they're wearing another mask, okay? And so I think that the mask itself can be a problem for spreading the COVID. And I have to disagree with the doctor there because reality, guys, in real world, these kids don't wear their masks. Teenagers, I'll give you a good example, wears them right here below their nose. They go out, and obviously, the COVID doesn't affect you during lunchtime. You're okay because they go out and they sit there in visit with each other and not wearing masks, okay? So I think we need to focus more on the daily behavior with the interaction of the mask that can spread it. Now, let's do a little science here. Let's talk about a little science here. Recently, and I'm talking about scientific research, and no disrespect to doctors, but I'm talking about scientific research, recently said that the variant, that the mask does not keep the variant out. So I think the big issue here is the fact, is it worth making our kids breathe carbon dioxide? I am a scientist, I do know that, to go through that mental anguish, to hurt their learning abilities, over something that really doesn't work, honestly. Now, if you want to wear a mask, I have no problem with that, but I think that the children and their parents should be given the ability to choose whether they wear one or not, with all the facts out now that the variant is not stopped by a mask. And guys, the masks are pretty, beautiful, they love them, but they're not effective. And I think we need to think of our kids' mental, mental and education and social reactions over the fact that the mask really doesn't work, guys. I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. Hamia Betia, safety. Hamia Betia regarding safety.
Dr. De La Torre, Members of the Board, Community Members, thank you for leading the way in keeping our Isleta community safe. Since the pandemic started, Isleta has led the way without controversy in keeping our community safe by making tests available to the community in addition to our students. At the end of the day, this should be a non-controversial decision. A mask mandate is yet another layer of protection. We're all familiar with football and baseball. You have to wear a helmet. Is a helmet 100% effective in preventing head injuries all the time? Absolutely not. But it's another layer of protection that makes common sense, and no parent in their right mind would dream of putting their kid on the field without one. There is no silver bullet into the prevention and eradication of the virus, but layered protection is what is universally recognized as the best approach. The district tests students, and there is no controversy. We heard earlier that the district also sanitizes the campuses without controversy. We heard that there are classrooms where students who have been potentially exposed can learn in without controversy. There are rules about social distancing on campus without controversy. This important layer of protection for our students should be passed by this board without controversy. We can all recall that time during the pandemic when things were in a much different situation. The time from when we had our first identified case in this community to the time when we had to have jail inmates stack bodies in freezers was blindingly fast. We have to learn from the past, and as a doctor previously stated, we should be proactive in our approach towards the health of students. Our healthcare workers want communities to help keep us safe. Our healthcare workers who were testing in the community during the height of the pandemic were out in the blazing sun during the summer for long periods of time wearing full PPE. That is a sacrifice that they've been willing to make for us, and they're asking us to make a minor sacrifice for the public good. Don't fall for the threats of some who will say that they'll take their children out of the district. Most private schools and charter schools already have a mask mandate. As parents, the most basic function we expect from the school when we drop off our children is entrusting the safety of our children. I will close by saying that as parents, we all agree that our job is to make sacrifices for our children. Many of us firmly believe that there's almost nothing we wouldn't do to keep our students safe, no matter the sacrifice. Yet what I'm hearing from some is that they want to sacrifice their children to further their political beliefs. That's backward thinking, and I don't think it's in line with our community's beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the amount of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Due to the time spent already, I think the board will take a 10-minute break and then resume with our meeting. Thank you all. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Time is 7:47. We will begin at 8:07. We will begin at 8:07. The board of trustees was hold a public hearing to discuss and set the district's tax rate on an annual basis. This is the hearing for that purpose. The notice of the public hearing to discuss the tax rate was published in the El Paso Times. The board of trustees appreciates your attendance and welcomes your input during the public hearing. Please observe the following rules. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding the tax rate?
No, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. If there is no one to speak on this issue, I will now close the public hearing on the tax rate. We will now move on to the agenda review. To discuss the agenda items is listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for the August 25, 2021, and related recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the August 25, 2021 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Okay. Consent item number one, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, June 9, 2021, 6:00 p.m. Item number two, consent item number two, Monthly Financial Update, May and June 2021. Consent item number three, YSD Contract Number 20210222 with the University of Texas at Austin for on-ramps. Consent item number four, Ratification of Award YSD Contract Number 20220021 with the El Paso County Juvenile Board. Approval number five, Approval of YSD Contract Number 20220001 with the County of El Paso. Consent item number six, Approval of Award of YSD Contract Number 20220019 with Region 10. Consent item number seven, 2021-22 Campus Improvement Plans. Consent item number eight, Pricing Modifications to Adult Meals.
I just have a quick question about that one. Are we experiencing a deficit in this area? Is that why we decided to raise?
A deficit in regards to receiving food, or in what regard? Mrs. Lucero?
Yeah, the cafeteria prices.
A deficit in funds being received? Yes, there is a deficit, but what they're doing at this point is attempting to increase the reimbursement cost. TDA and the USDA are working on the reimbursements.
Hey, so if we work on the reimbursement cost, will we still need this increase?
This is totally separate and apart. The adult pricing, we don't receive reimbursement on. The student pricing, we do. The reasoning behind the increase in the adult pricing is the cost of food and our ability to receive food services. There was an inflation in food cost, and so along with the calculator from the TDA/USDA, it gives us the number in which we should charge for adult price bills.
Okay, thank you.
It's based on inflation and the cost of food.
President Ochoa, I'd like to go back to number seven, Campus Improvement Plans. Can somebody explain this to me?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Just explain the improvement plans that are going on.
The campus improvements are a requirement that we come to you every year. It's a requirement of our federal funds. That's how our schools tell us what targets, what specific things they want to spend their federal money, anything from Title I, bilingual, Title II, III. So they just give you... Most, all our campus improvement plans are aligned with Encore 2025, so they're tied to those targets. All we need from them is a specific action and what they plan to spend their money on in order to be able to process the expenditure.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you just give me an example, when you say campus improvement?
So, for example, an elementary school, and I am going to improve my reading scores, because that's one of our targets, correct? And I want to be able to pay teachers extra duty pay after school. And they're going to pay it out of a Title I fund. So that's an example of an expenditure.
So this is involving, excuse me, involving the academic operation of our schools?
Yes, the academic... No, the academic piece isn't how they're going to address using their federal funds, how they're going to meet those different strategies that they have, the different targets.
All right, thank you.
Where can we find those improvement plans?
They sent you the link, sir, for you. They're also posted on their campus websites. By law, we post the district and campus improvement plans.
Okay, thank you. All right. Consent item number nine, Approval of Teacher Certification Waivers for Two Chinese Teachers. Item number seven, Request to the Texas Education Agency for Class Size Waivers.
Again, I have a question there. How big a waiver are we talking about? We're going 21, 22 to 1?
So currently, in K through 4, it's 22 to 1. Right now, we have four campuses that we're requesting the waiver on, and the classrooms would be no more than 1 to 2 students. So we're looking at going from 22 to about 24, 25. And because there's such a fluid nature in enrollment right now, the classes could hit 23, but then we could jump back to 19. It's just as a safety measure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. If there's no questions, now we'll move to the full consent agenda items. Number one, Ratification of YSD Contract Number 20210225 with the El Paso County Community College District for EMT slash ECG program. Number two, Contract Number 20210221 with El Paso County Community College District for Dual Credit Partnership. Number three, Approval of Award YSD Contract Number 20210142 with EPCC and UTEP for CCRSM Grant. Now we'll move on to the policy items. Remember, you can stop me and if you have any questions at any time. Number one, Policy Item Number One, Revision to Policy CH Local Purchasing and Acquisition.
Regarding that one, what are we... Have we done an assessment as far as the damage that might have occurred? Or is this for future concerns, or?
This is, should there be any future leaks or adverse impact of facilities that would require us to move quickly in an effort to repair them? Is that accurate, Lindley?
Yes, sir, it is. So, most of the damage that we saw from the recent flooding, we've handled internally. So, if we have a claim, it's very minor.
Thank you.
Policy item number two, revision to policy CHE local purchasing and acquisitions, vendor disclosures, and contracts. Item number three, revision of local CLA, local building grounds and equipment management and security. Number four, CB, local facilities construction. Number five, revision to policy DEC, local compensation and benefits, leaves and absences. Number six, revision to policy EIF, local academic achievement graduation.
I have some questions on that one.
Yes, sir.
What is the rationale for not having a student complete a college application?
This was requested by the academics department, the high school academics department. There are different tests that students could take to show college readiness, and this was felt that this was not no longer an applicable requirement for graduation. It was something that we always added, that was something we had added in the past, and it was academics viewpoint that it wasn't necessary any longer for graduation requirements.
To fill out a college application?
To fill out a college application, that's correct.
But there's other tests that they can take?
I'm sorry, I can't.
You said there's other tests they can take?
I'm saying there's -- they are still taking various tests to show college readiness, but doing a college application is not a requirement.
Correct. Students can take the TSI, SAT, ACT, any of those college prep assessments. The college application itself does not make them -- is not part of the graduation plan.
But what does that have to do with filling out a college application?
That's why we've removed it.
I'm sorry, I was just giving a more expansive answer, but you're right. It has nothing to do with it.
Ms. Austin or Dr. Chacon, I think you have one of your directors back there that's --
There she is.
-- would like to comment on that.
Yes, go ahead, Luis.
It's an outdated local policy.
I'm sorry, you got to do it.
It's an outdated local policy, so all we're doing is removing the old language on there. It's since been updated, and it's no longer a requirement. All of the accountability pieces are now part of the accountability system and not part of the local policy.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why would we not want a child to fill out a college application and show them they have the ability to go to college if they want to?
We want them to do that. We continue to do that. We're still rated on it in our accountability system under CCR accountability pieces, but it's not a local policy. So we still have -- we're still accountable for all that. We still push all of that. We have a whole big college and career readiness initiative that we're rolling out specifically to address those pieces, but it's an accountability issue. It's no longer a local policy. None of our neighboring districts have that as a local policy anymore either because it's not a local policy anymore. That was the only reason for removing that from there.
Can I ask a question on that? On CCMR, the students that, I guess, did not choose to apply for any college, which is the application, they are going to -- in their military service, so that takes it in place or replaces this?
Yes, sir. It's with that accountability pieces, so it's among that and other measures as well, whether they enter a college of a four-figure college or whether they enter the military, it's under that exact accountability system. You are correct.
Okay. How about those students that choose not to go to college but go to trade school?
Trades count as well, and that is why we push the PSAT, SAT, TSI, A, House Bill 5 courses, all of those other pieces on there to support that college and career readiness piece.
Okay, so those students wouldn't be required to make a college application?
It's something we still offer and something we still promote, but yes, sir, we find other ways that meet the specific needs or through their pathways to support those initiatives.
Do we still pay for either the ACT or SAT?
Yes, sir. SAT and PSAT.
I don't see the reason why we wouldn't have them complete a college application whether they go to military service or not. Maybe they never thought of college as an option until they applied, they get accepted.
This is not indicating that we're no longer doing that. This is just indicating that it doesn't live here where we do it.
It means you're catching it somewhere else.
That's correct. It just doesn't live in this local policy.
And it's not required?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. Number seven, revision to policy FO, local student discipline.
Can we pull that one?
Want to pull number six? We're pulling policy number six, revision to policy EIF, local academic achievement All right. Action items. Number one. Did I skip number seven? I thought I'd said it. Revision of local FO, local student discipline. I did say that one, right? Did I? Yeah, I did.
I have a question, but I'm sorry, guys. So for the policy item number seven, where district administrator is not able to view recordings prior to, how would -- it's just a strange policy.
Under the current policy, they could view it, but they couldn't make a copy of it, and they had to come to central office to view it.
Okay, streamlined. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, action item number one, order setting tax rate for 2021-22. Number two, donation to the Fine Arts Department from Teachers Federal Credit Union. Number three, modification of 2021-2022 compensation plan for non-scheduled compensation rates. This is compensation for administering the test?
Yes, sir. It includes that along with slight increases in our remote conferencing sub daily rate as well as our part-time past tutors.
And these individuals had to go through training and certification, right?
100% sure.
Yeah.
Not always certification, but definitely training, sir.
Okay.
For the testing, they do require a certification.
Mr. Rosales.
Just a point of clarification for me. How much impact? Is it just minimal as far as compensation readjustment, if you will?
It is minimal. I'd have to defer to Mrs. Lieber on the cost of it.
Approximately.
Excuse me. I think we originally calculated that the stipend for Finex testing, if every single teacher in the elementary grades was willing to teach or willing to test, it could be in the neighborhood of $250,000, and we're nowhere near that, so.
Thank you. Moving on, number four is endorsement of candidate for Region 19, member of the TASB Board of Directors. Number five is the Sleda ISD delegate and alternate designation for the TASB Delicate Assembly. Number six is the declaration of certain school property as surplus and authorization to offer for sale. Number seven, approval of change order number one to YSD contract number 20210188 with Close session, we have Discuss Public Utility Commission of Texas, PUC, proceeding, PUC docket number 52195, SOAH docket number 473-21-2606, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates. Number two, consideration of sealed bids and possible sale of South Loop Elementary School property. Number three, discussion with legal counsel regarding possible litigation in regards to COVID safety measures. Action after closed session, number one, Public Utility Commission of PUC, proceeding, PUC docket number 52195, SOAH docket number 473-21-2606, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and interlocal agreement with other rate 41 entities for possible intervention and joint engagement of legal counsel. Number two, consideration of sealed bids and possible sale of South Loop Elementary School property. Number three, action on possible litigation in regards to COVID-19 safety measures. And number four, discussion item with possible action to be taken regarding the requirements amassed by those who are inside district facilities. All right, that concludes our workshop. Now we will proceed. The order agenda has been approved for May 1, having, okay, with, let's see. Consent items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
A motion by Ms. Woodrow. Do I have a second? She's not sure.
Shane. Shane did it.
I don't see it on my screen. There it is. I got it. All right, I got a second by Mr. Shane Haggerty. All votes have been cast. The vote is seven in favor and none opposed. Okay, pool consent agenda items. The order of the agenda has been approved. The following items were pulled as trustee Ramidis has recused himself for the items listed in the pool consent agenda. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the pool consent items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration?
Mr. President, I move to approve the polled consent.
We have Connie as the --
No, you're good.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Woodrow.
Mr. President, I move to approve the polled consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration. I'm going to say also that's the polled one, one, two, and three. I'm not talking about number six that was polled before, so.
Number six will be under policy polled consent.
That's another policy, yeah. All right, I have a second by Mr. Shane Haggerty. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are six in favor, one abstention. We have a poll policy item, number six.
Number six is going to follow the policy action items, so we can do all the policy action items now and then go into the polled. So you can take one vote for all the policy action items. I did remove number six to the polled policy items.
Okay, where is that?
Page seven.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been a long night. All right, the order -- or the agenda has been approved. May I have, for the policy items with number six being pulled, may I have an electronic motion? Motion, sorry, and second. Mr. Bustillos.
Mr. President. I move to approve the remaining policy items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. The results are seven in favor, none opposed. Do we do the pool consent item now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have pool consent item number six. That's the revision to policy EIF, local academic achievement and graduation. We have to take a physical.
Did you want to have discussion, or do we want to go straight to the vote?
I don't know. Do you want to have a discussion? Yes, go ahead.
If there's any objection to moving this item to next month's agenda, so we have time to learn a little bit more about what the new changes are and how that will affect the students.
I don't think that will have an impact on anything at this time. Everybody, we want to move it to the next, then? All approved? Aye. Aye. Okay, we'll move it to the next month's agenda.
We'll put together some information and get it out to all of you so that you can review it, and then we'll also be providing some information relative to the CCMR program that we plan to introduce to the board in September. Correct?
Thank you.
And the other thing too, Dr. LaForte, if, as was meant, the comment was made that this doesn't reside in this particular policy anymore, you know, where does it reside? How does it read? And, you know, what of any impact?
Yes, sir. We'll make it clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the action items. Number one, order setting the tax rate at 2021-22. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos.
Mr. President, I move to approve that 2021-22 property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate as a set forth in the attachment -- attached order and include separate components for maintenance and operation of $103.2, the debt service of 0.495 for a total of $1.527 per $100 of -- what's that word? Valuation, which is effective, which is effectively as 5.65% increase in the tax rate.
I have a second by Ms. Woodrow. Please cast your votes. Votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number two, donation of Fine Arts Department from Teachers Federal Credit Union. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Haggerty.
I'd just like to thank the Teachers Federal Credit Union for a very generous gift, and I definitely appreciate their continued support for our district and our students.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. No further discussion. Please cast your votes. I mean, please, may I have a motion? I mean, please, may I have a motion? Mr. Haggerty.
I move to approve a donation to the Fine Arts Department for a citywide Fine Arts Teacher Professional Development Day from Teachers Federal Credit Union in the amount of $5,200 towards the luncheon and raffle.
We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast all your votes. Votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Number three, action item number three, modification of 2021-2022 Compensation Plan for Non-Scheduled Compensation Rates. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff.
Mr. President, I move to approve a modification of the 2021, 21, I'm sorry, I'll start over, 2021-22 Compensation Plan, list of non-scheduled compensation rates to increase certain rates at a stipend for certified BINAX testing administrator and at a standard daily rate for remote conference learning substitute teachers as presented to the board.
Thank you. I have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Number four, endorsement of candidate for Region 19 member of TASB Board of Directors. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
President Ochoa, I think Armando Rodriguez is in the audience. I don't know if he wants to say a few words.
Is that okay? Is that okay? Is there a few words?
Good evening, board members, superintendent, community. My name is Armando Rodriguez, and I appreciate you all letting me speak just briefly. I provided some information, but, you know, Isleta has a piece of my heart, and so I wanted to make sure I was here to be present. I have already received the amount of endorsements that I need to actually become the regional director, but I did want to come in person and just to show support. And thank you for the continued support you've had, I've had in the past from you all and the work that you all are doing as board members and as staff. You all have really transformed this district and really have focused on student outcomes and making sure we change the trajectory of many of our kids' lives, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we have, in order to be fair, is Marlene Bullard here?
Yes.
Oh, you have a question? Oh, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a couple of comments, and I don't think Ms. Bullard's here this evening. These two folks, these two trustees, these two community volunteers, they put in literally hundreds of hours every month in the service to, not only to their boards and their communities, but to Region 19 and to the state of Texas. Ms. Bullard, you know, comes from a rural, rural district, and it's so rural that they don't even have a town, so the school district is basically the town. So when things happen, they all come to the school and the superintendent and the trustees have to play a different role than, unlike any other board. And so I've known Ms. Bullard for about six years now, and just, again, just an excellent volunteer, a great leader, a good trustee, and, you know, we're better in Region 19 because of her. Armando is, again, another one of those, he comes from a little smaller district, or comes from a small district, but they're fast-growing, they've been very dynamic in their leadership. The other big thing about Armando, and I just wanted to make this comment, is that he is active in numerous organizations that benefit not only his district, but also benefit Region 19, including having leadership positions in TASB, our Texas Association of School Boards, and I guess in a couple of years, hopefully, Mondo, he should be board president, yeah, in a couple of years. And, boy, talk about being a big deal for Region 19. It truly will. He's also on NSBA and just, I don't even know where, how else, all the different things he's done. And so, again, we're honored to have such a great volunteer within Region 19, and, again, certainly deserving of our support. So, thank you, and thank you for coming out and spending, given enough of your evening, even though you didn't need the votes, and that says a lot about you. Appreciate you. Yes, sir.
I do very quickly want to add to Lucero's comments. I met Armando when I first got on the board at Masbah. At that time, he was the president, or was the oncoming president. And I'm, and again, I have, and I have a lot of respect for Ms. Bullard myself also, but I've seen Mondo in action. I've seen Mondo confront quite a bit of opposition from individuals that felt they didn't want the change. But what he did, he took the Masbah book and literally brought it up to today's standards. And I saw him in action, you know, we tease each other a lot, but the fact is, when the, when you need someone to do things, Mondo is a leader. And I appreciate you being here, and I hope that you go much further up the ladder, okay? I just want to add that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. And Mr. Haggerty.
I also met Mondo when I first got on the board, when he was the youngest board member in the county. And right away, I took to him because, not just his leadership, but his willingness to teach and go the extra distance for anybody from El Paso. When he was, he just got elected vice president when the very first non-Mexican-American school board member from Region 19 got elected to the board ever. And again, that was due to your leadership, so I can't personally thank you enough. And whenever I do see a new board member and they do have questions, I always, from any district, I make sure to have them call you because I know they're going to get the answers they need and the leadership and the mentorship that they need. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Anybody wants to say anything? Okay, if there are further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move to approve YISD's endorsement of Armando Rodriguez for the Region 19 position on the TASB Board of Directors.
We have a second by Mr. Mike Rosales. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor and none opposed. Okay, action item number five, YSD delegate and alternate designation for TASB Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? I move to approve trustee Bustillos as delegate and trustee Lucero as alternate delegate to serve as the board's voice in the TASB Delegate Assembly. I have a second with my, by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you all for taking that step and representing us. Number six. Number six, declaration of certain school properties as surplus and authorization to offer for sale. We have a revised recommendation from an administration to remove Ranchland Hills as surplus property. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Haggerty.
I move to approve the declaration that the following school properties, South Loop Elementary School, Mary Manor Elementary School, Hacienda Heights, Ranchland Hills Middle School, and former location of Alicia Archacon International School on Prado Road, are no longer needed for district purposes long-term and authorize the superintendent to engage a licensed real estate broker where appropriate and offer the properties for sale subject to legal requirements and board approval.
Thank you. We have a second by Ms.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I think the motion was misstated. Actually, we want to remove Ranchland Hills and include Hacienda Heights. So it should be South Loop, Mary Ann Manor, Hacienda Heights, and the former location of Alicia Archacon International School on Prado Road.
Does South Loop need to be on there as well, too?
I'm sorry.
Do you need South Loop on there since we're going to talk about South Loop later?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
So, can you read that again? Yes.
Yes, sir. It should be South Loop Elementary, the whole motion. You want me to read? Okay, South Loop Elementary, Mary Ann Manor Elementary, Hacienda Heights Elementary, and the former location of Alicia Archacon International School on Prado Road.
And that's what he reads?
Yes, sir, but that's not what he said.
Would you like to state that again, Mr. Haggerty?
I move to approve the declaration that the following school properties, South Loop Elementary School, Mary Ann Manor Elementary School, Hacienda Heights Elementary School, and the former location of Alicia Archacon International School on Prado Road, are no longer needed for district purposes long-term and authorize the superintendent to engage a licensed real estate broker where appropriate and offer the properties for sale subject to legal requirements and board approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haggerty. We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Seven in favor, none opposed. Number seven, approval of change order number one to YSD contract number 20210188 with basic IDIQ. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve change order number one to YSD contract number 20210188 with basic IDIQ for Beller Middle School repairs to increase the fee by an amount of $5,658.15 and contingent upon Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
We have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Now we are moving into closed session. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action decision or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grande Room at 8:43 PM.
You know, the Board of Trustees with Charlie Bustillo, Saltero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodrow, Catherine Lucero, and myself at 10:06 PM. Action after closed session on item number one, Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC proceeding, PUC docket number 52195, SOAH docket number 473-21-2606, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and enter local agreement with other rate 41 entities for possible intervention and joint engagement of legal counsel. I have a motion.
Can I get in here?
Mr. Rosales.
Give me a second.
You're the mover.
I move to approve the district intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC proceeding, PUC docket number 52195, SOAH docket number 473212606, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and enter local agreement with other rate 41 entities and joint engagement of legal counsel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Number two, consideration of sealed bids and possible sale of South Loop Elementary School property. May I have a motion? Mr. Ramirez.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of South Loop Elementary School property located at 520 South Side Road, El Paso, Texas, to Isleta del Sur Pueblo on terms discussed in closed session.
We have a second by Mr. Shane Hagerty. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, none opposed. Item number three, action of possible litigation in regard to COVID-19 safety measures. Is there a motion? Okay. Item number four, discussion with possible action to be taken regarding the requirement of mask worn by those who are inside the district facilities. I would like to say a statement on that. I think I believe that the district is handling the issue in an effective manner and as is, so I don't see the need for any board action at this time. Motion? I have a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead. Discussion.
Go ahead, discussion.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank the district for stepping up and following that city mandate. I think that we're in the business to educate kids and to keep kids in as safe of an environment as possible. I hate wearing these things. That's why I got vaccinated. But for the kids who can't get vaccinated, we need to make sure that they feel safe coming to school. I understand that you don't want your kid to wear a mask or you don't want your kid to wear a mask. But at the same time, just like Dr. Ocaranza said, those surgical masks, they're not for your safety, they're for the safety of somebody else. When a five-year-old, when a seven-year-old coughs or sneezes, it affects the other student. But when they're wearing the mask, it blocks it. It's not 100% effective, but it's effective to the point where, from what I was reading, without the mask, it goes six feet, 10 feet, which is why we separate six feet, 10 feet. When you're not wearing the mask and you're just speaking, it's three feet. That's why now we're able to do the three feet separation as opposed to the six feet. The other thing the masks do is, I'm wearing my mask. Oh, that's right, I gotta go wash my hands. Oh, I gotta go use the hand sanitizer. It's just a reminder for me to continue to do all the other things that are in place to keep us safe, just like the safety vestibules. If you look at, only 1% of kids are getting sick. Well, how many kids are getting shot? But we have that security system in place to prevent that from happening, period. I want zero kids to get shot. I want zero kids at one of my schools to test positive for COVID, not eight in one day. And until that happens, again, I'm very happy that the district has moved to make as mandatory as possible wearing these masks and keeping our kids safe and providing that environment for them to be able to learn safely and do the best that they can do. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment, and this is for the public, that this board has taken a methodical approach, I feel at this point, a more practical approach into this major question that you have as far as protection. And I appreciate that we've taken the time to look at this thing fairly instead of taking some drastic impromptu action. And I think we will continue monitoring, if I read all this correctly tonight, we're going to continue monitoring and see how things are evolving out there with our children. Again, keeping in mind that the education of our children and their well-being is of utmost importance to us. Thank you so much.
I just want to say that I appreciate the action that the district administration has taken as far as the city's mask mandate. I believe that we need to, as a board member, I need to do whatever is possible to protect each and every child. And even if we can save one child by wearing a mask, then I think it's important. And I will continue to advocate for that. I know it's hard, I know it's difficult. I know none of us wants to stay eight hours wearing a mask, but it's a small sacrifice to save a life.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, thank you so much. We've been here a little later than normal. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.